Welcome to the 2016 swearing-in ceremony for the town of Wallingford. We appreciate all of you attending. I will now ask Commander Roy Cannon to post the colors.
Color guard, post the colors. And salute.
Thank you, Commander Cannon. I now ask Reverend Dean Warburton to come forward.
Sisters and brothers, let us give thanks. Gracious God, we are grateful for this night when we can be together and look ahead to the year of 2016. We ask your blessing upon all of us gathered here, upon the town of Wallingford, and upon those who have pledged to serve in the offices of the town of Wallingford. We ask that you would enable a peaceful dialogue in our community, that we would work together diligently and fairly, and honor each other's intentions, desires, and help us to work to a satisfactory conclusion in all matters of government. We ask your blessing upon our community, our state, our nation, and upon the world in which we live. We pray that we may live in peace with each other, and that as you watch over us, the abundance of your blessing may pour out upon us, and especially upon this nation, that we may feel the invigorating spirit of your companionship. All this, in the loving Creator's name. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Warburton. And now I'll ask the Chairwoman of the Public Celebrations Committee, Lorraine Devaney, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Put your hand to your heart and recite, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is its hands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you, Lorraine and Reverend Warburton. And now I will ask Commander Cannon to retire the colors.
Color guard, right face. Retire the colors. And salute. Color guard, color guard, hold. The rear.
Right face.
Color guard, hold.
We neglected a very important item here, and that is to have David Giardino and the Jazz Ensemble to lead us in the National Anthem.
Color guard, retire the colors.
Thank you, Commander Cannon, and thank you, color guard. The color guard was made up of the American Legion Shaw sign on Post 73, American Legion Sidlicky Post 187, VFW Major Rawl Lufberry Post 591, VFW Stanley Budleski Post 9965, Amvets Post 83, and the Wallingford Elks Lodge, as well as the Edison Division C Cadet Corps. We thank them all for being here, and of course, once again, the most capable music and performance by the Jazz Ensemble. Now I'd like to ask Judge Wright to come forward and conduct the swearing-in for the Mayor of the Town of Wallingford.
Mr. Mayor, if you'd raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, William W. Dickinson Jr., do solemnly swear.
I, William W. Dickinson Jr., do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Connecticut.
And the Constitution of the State of Connecticut.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully discharge according to law.
And I will faithfully discharge according to law.
The duties of the office of Mayor of Wallingford.
The duties of the office of Mayor of Wallingford.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. It's a delight to see all of you here. Congratulations to all of the elected officials. We have obviously the Council and the Board of Education here tonight. We are entrusted with the management of the affairs of the town of Wallingford, and that's an important task. Tonight, we begin a new year, Happy New Year to everyone. It is a solemn, a humbling, and a joyous occasion, really. It's solemn because we are meeting the requirements of our charter, swearing an oath of office that we will do our best to do our duty for the community and address its needs. It's a humbling occasion because, given our community, the people that live in it, the businesses that provide employment in it, its needs, there is no simple answer to the challenges we will face, and arriving at decisions will take all of the good effort that we possess. So it is humbling when we realize, all of you, the people of Wallingford, have entrusted us with that responsibility. It's a joyous occasion because it's the start of a new year. We all should be anticipating good things for each of our own families, as well as the community. It is a time to celebrate. You know, it's almost like starting a new job in many ways, and I'm reminded of a situation, a person driving a vehicle, a stormy, dark night, drove by a bus stop and saw three people at the bus stop, out in the rain and the cold. One was an elderly woman who clearly needed medical assistance; two was an old friend, someone who had saved your life at an earlier time. Hadn't seen that person in years. And third, the soulmate of your life, the love of your life, been looking for that person forever. The eyes caught, and you knew. Your vehicle only has one passenger seat. So who'd you decide to take? The elderly woman in need of assistance? The friend who saved your life? The person you've dreamed of for all time? That question was posed to job applicants, I'm told. And the winning answer was, "I take the keys of my car, give it to the friend to take the elderly woman to the hospital, and wait for the bus with the love of my life." May we all make decisions that turn out so agreeably for everyone. Thank you. And now I will ask Judge Wright to come forward and swear in the Town Council of the town of Wallingford.
If you'd raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge according to law your duties as members of the Town Council of Wallingford, to the best of your abilities, so help you, God?
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'll ask the Kirk Clerk to read the roll call.
Thank you. Servoni.
Here.
Fishmine.
Here.
Hello?
Here, here, here.
Laughin.
Here.
I'm not used to going second.
Leturno.
Here.
Morone.
Here.
Chortel.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Testa.
Here.
Zandry.
Here.
All accounted for, sir.
Very good. The first order of business, I will open the floor for nominations for the position of Council Chairman. Mr. Laughin.
Mr. Mayor, thank you and congratulations on your inauguration. Also, congratulations to my fellow councilors, and welcome to all of our family and friends here at the Robert F. Parisi Town Council Chambers. I got your back, Bob. Tonight, I'd like to ask my fellow councilors to consider once again Vincent Servoni for another term as our Town Council Chairman. Vinny has served the last term with incredible dignity and a calm that I don't understand or get at times, but admire. He's had tremendous shoes to fill. He also has previously served as the Council Vice Chairman. And Vinny, with all due sincerity, you're probably the second-greatest Vice Chairman the Town Council's ever known. In addition to his calm demeanor, Vinny's strength lies in two areas. The first is his dedication to Wallingford, his genuine dedication to do what is right and avoid all the petty games to get there. He just wants a better Wallingford. The other strength is probably the most important for his role, for this role as the Town Council Chairman, his ability to be a strong teammate while at the same time being a leader, and to each of us, in our own ways, a partner. Being a partner is important because it brings out the best in each other, causing us to then bring out the best in him. He does not set himself above us. He doesn't expect us to stand behind him or over his shoulder. He expects us and calls on us to be equals, in a way that we all become better councilors. He does not expect any of us to fall in any lines or to change who we are in order to make him look better. Yes, we all won our individual elections this past fall, but tonight we come together to serve as one. And like he does so famously with his guitar, Vinny brings us together to create harmony, a harmony of nine, not six, or three, or five, or four, but a harmony of nine. Because that's what we are now. We are nine partners, we are nine teammates, we are nine public servants, all here for the same reason. We may think that we need to get there slightly different ways, but in the end, we all want the same thing. We want what Vinny wants. We want a better Wallingford. My fellow councilors, I nominate Vincent Servoni for another term as Chairman of the Town Council.
Is there a second to the nomination? Mr. Leturno.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations to my fellow councilors, my teammates. I've watched Vinny, over the last few years, grow into the position from Vice Chair to Chair, and he's come a long ways, he's done a great job, and I see that job continuing. I see his patience, and I see his leadership continuing. So I asked my councilors, my teammates, tonight, I second the nomination for Vinny, that we have him for another term. Thank you.
Are there any further nominations? Do I hear a motion to close nominations?
Motion, we close nominations.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded, all in favor of closing nominations for the position of Council Chair, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. There is one name and nomination, all in favor of endorsing, voting for Vincent Servoni, Chair of the Council, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Inanimously. Mr. Chair, the meeting is yours.
Well, good evening. Judge Wright, Mayor Dickinson, members of the administration, members of the Board of Education, members of the public. I'd like to begin by thanking my fellow councilors for the honor they've bestowed upon me by making me their chairman. Thank you to Counselor Laughin for your exceedingly kind words of nomination, and to Counselor Leturno for the kind words in his second. While in honor, this is an obligation that I do not take lightly at all. We begin this term with many concerns. The mayor's often very good at reminding us about these concerns very artfully. We face a global economy and challenges imposed upon us by the state of Connecticut and the federal government, and they're all real. These will be among our challenges to weather in the coming term. Even with those concerns, I do remain hopeful. Wallingford is a great town with a great future. We already have a thriving business economy in town which will continue to foster, we will continue to foster and cultivate. We have a tremendous school system which we will also continue to support. But by way of a specific example, we have an incentive housing zone which has been passed to enhance the area surrounding the new train station which is being built. While the new zone presents tremendous opportunity, the fire of activity it should be is a fire that is yet to spark. I hope this council is able to turn this opportunity into another jewel in the crown that is Wallingford's. While I can think of many other specific examples, that is just one. At some point, the future must become now. I hope that will take place in this term. To make this happen, this council is going to have to work together. We're going to have to have difficult discussions. We may have to get creative. We may have to color outside the lines. We will have to work through disagreements, and we will have to reach compromises. I have confidence that this group will accomplish much in the coming two years. So, to quote my predecessor, for whom this council auditorium is now named, "It is time we put politics aside and work together to do what is best for this town." My fellow councilors, I am confident that you will join me, join this unified team in working for what is best for this great town of Wallingford. Thank you. With that, the next item of business on the agenda is the election of the Town Council Vice Chairman. Are there any nominations for Vice Chairman? Counselor Chortel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to place a nomination for Vice Chair, Thomas Laughin. I've had the privilege of knowing Tom for the last few years, and I think he's a leader. He's also a problem solver, and I've knocked on a lot of doors with Tom the last two election cycles, and I've seen how he talks to people, listens to their concerns, and does a lot of work behind the scenes. You won't see his name in the paper all the time, but he certainly does a lot, and he is remarkable to me, also because he is approaching a decade of service. If you add his Board of Ed service and now his council tenure, he's only 15 years old, so that's pretty remarkable. It's a school night, so I'll keep this short, but it's been an honor to get to know Tom and to watch him and learn from him, and so I'm honored to be his friend and I'm honored to put his name in nomination. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any seconds?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to second the nomination of Thomas Laughin for Council Vice Chair. If you've seen Tom speak publicly, he frequently talks about decisions are made by those who show up, and if there's one thing I know about Tom, it's that he always shows up, whether it's for a council meeting, or a Cub Scout event, or any number of events around town, Tom's the guy that always shows up. And I think Tom's calm demeanor, his rational mind, and his quick wit has been a real asset to the council these past two years, and I would like to see that continue. And that's why I am honored to second the nomination of Tom Laughin.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations for Vice Chairman? Hearing none, is there a motion to close nominations?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor of closing nominations signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. There is one candidate for Vice Chairman, Counselor Laughin. All those in favor of Counselor Laughin for Vice Chairman signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
Duly noted. One opposition, eight, seven in favor. The motion passes. Congratulations, Vice Chairman Laughin. Thank you. Next item of business is the swearing-in of the members of the Board of Education. Judge Wright, if you will come forward, and will the members of the Board of Education, duly elected, please come forward.
If you'd all, please raise your right hands. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge according to law your duties as members of the Wallingford Board of Education, to the best of your abilities, so help you, God? Congratulations, ladies and gentlemen.
Congratulations. All right, the next item of business is the appointment of Town Clerk. I'd like to execute Chairman's privilege, and I'd like to nominate Barbara Thompson. After eight years, the last six of which have been consecutive, serving as our Town Clerk, it makes perfect sense that we would nominate Barbara Thompson to be our Town Clerk once again. After all, she has most recently held the office of President of the New Haven County Town Clerks Association, having been elected this past March of 2015. In addition, she sits on the Executive Board of the Connecticut Town Clerks Association, along with that association's Legislative Committee. Also, she's been a certified Connecticut Town Clerk since 2011. Before she ran with the Town Clerks in this state, Barbara was a licensed real estate agent for 20 years. Of those 20, 12 were spent actively selling real estate. During that time, she became Chairman of the Connecticut Real Estate Commission. So she did spend a significant amount of time looking across the Town Clerk's counter from the other side. We can continue to talk about Barbara's qualifications, whether in management, in leadership in the Wallingford Republican Town Committee, working on elections, or having served as registrar of voters, but that doesn't get to the heart of Barbara, the Barbara you meet when you come to our Town Clerk's office. The Barbara you meet is a wife, mother of two and stepmother of two more, all four of whom are girls. And most recently, she is the proud grandmother of Morrison, to whom she more than affectionately refers to as her mojo. This is the Barbara whose smile you see when you meet her at our Town Clerk's office. For all of those reasons, I am proud to nominate Barbara Thompson to the position of Wallingford's Town Clerk for another two-year term. Are there any seconds? Counselor Fishmine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I must share that the past 24 hours have been quite a mess for me, and I felt it to be most appropriate to encapsulate those in a poem, so...
You've never done that before.
Thank you. And it goes like this. 'Twas the night before swearing-in, and I'm racking my brain. Forever the life of me, I can't remember the name. Of the person who I'm to second in nomination, leading to a headache from all the frustration. I know that she has served in this position for a few years, eight, I believe, and without any fears. For she surely knows the job of being a Town Clerk, a voice of authority and important town work. Still the night before, all snug in my bed, while visions of many faces dance in my head, I still find it hard to come up with her name, yet I settle down to slumber, although mired in shame. When out on the lawn there arose such a clatter, I sprang for my bed, although Christmas made me fatter. Reaching the window, I peered out to see, a tall, hooded man, and he was staring up at me. I said, "Who are you?" I said, "Who are you there standing on my lawn? You are trespassing now and thus must be gone." He said, "Please understand that I am just not a threat. I'm here to help you find this name that you forget." "I can find that out on the internet if you please," he said, "do not trust that tool of the Russians and Chinese." Better yet, looked to the books upon my shelf, that is what I do when I need to name an elf. Well, faced with all that logic, I had no other choice. I reached for my iPhone and in a clear voice, I said, "Help me, Siri, my brain just will not work. I need to know the name of Wallingford's town clerk. She does the job of many, the office does run smooth, efficiencies aplenty, the taxpayers do approve. Always pleasant to deal with, always want to listen, our state's best town clerk, there is no competition." Along came the answer, Siri does not let me down, the name of which I searched high and low across the town. She said, "Barbara Thompson is the name you're looking for. What are you, stupid? She's a clerk of modern folklore." And so out through the window I did once again look, the man was still out there frantically flipping through a book. I yelled down to him that I had already found the name, with that he finally left and thus I need not take aim. And so on this evening of fancy footwork, I second the nomination of Barbara Thompson for town clerk, not before I mention to my heartfelt delight, a happy new year to all and to all a good night.[1189.58][1189.58][applause]
Are there any other nominations for town clerk? Hearing none, is there a motion to close nominations?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor of closing nominations signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. There is one candidate for the appointment of town clerk, all those in favor of appointing Barbara Thompson, town clerk, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Congratulations, Ms. Thompson. Judge Wright, will you please come forward and do the honors?
If you would raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge according to law your duties as the Wallingford town clerk to the best of your ability, so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations. With your permission, Mr. Chair, I just want to recognize three ladies who've really done the lion's share of organizing this evening. We have Lorene Devaney, chairwoman of the Public Celebrations Committee right back here, Joan Stave, administrative aide in my office, and Linda Mealy, also in the mayor's office. So please thank them for all of the minutes.
Let us give thanks. Gracious God, send us forth from this evening so filled with promise and goodwill. Grant your blessing upon our town and upon our citizens, upon all those who serve, upon all those who work for our safety and well-being. We thank you, God, that we may live as brothers and sisters in this community together. Send your blessing upon us.
Mr. Giardina, would you Thank you, Mr. Giardina, and the Sheehan High School Jazz Ensemble. Nicely done. There being no other business on the agenda tonight, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Move to, motion to adjourn, seconded. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?